I call the Peoria Public Schools Board of Education meeting for February 12th, 2018 to order. Would you please call the roll?
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Dr. Davidson, I'll give this.
Here.
Mr. Shaw? Mr. Sherman?
Here.
Mrs. Jackson?
Here.
Mr. Walter? Mr. Adel?
Here.
Mrs. Ross?
Here.
Thank you. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands alone nation under God, indivisible, the rule of law, and of order.
Are there any announcements?
I have one.
All right. Mr. Wilson?
Mr. Wilson, you want to go first?
No, I can't. Peoria Public Schools is applying for the 21st Century Grant for Treewind School, Manual Academy, and Glen Oak Community Learning Center in hopes of programming to begin in fiscal year 19. If approved, the 21st Century is a five-year grant that will allow students to experience fine arts, increase academic achievement, and focus on SEL skills and strategies during a two-and-a-half-hour-long after-school program. The grant is due this week, and we hope to find out within 90 days if the opportunity will be funded for our students. President's Day, just a reminder to our parents and community that next Monday, February 19th, is President's Day. Our schools and district offices will be closed for the holiday. That's February 19th. Peoria Public Schools is hoping to attract additional guest teachers to help us finish out the school year strong. Guest teachers can fill any open teaching positions on a daily or long-term basis. A bachelor's degree is required, but no prior experience is needed. We offer competitive rates at $130 per day for regular positions and $180 per day for long-term or reserve positions. To learn how you can obtain your substitute teacher's certificate, visit the flyer posted on our website, peoriapublicschools.org.
I have two.
Thank you, Mary.
First, Peoria Public Schools are observing Black History Month during February. Ridgewood's High School MAP, or Minority Academic Advancement Program, will lead the school's Black History Month celebration. The theme is '90s Television with observances to include daily trivia, '90s music, a spirit week, and a student-run assembly on Friday, February 23rd. Peoria High students are observing Black History Month with Mic Drop. Every Thursday during sixth period in February, students are invited to perform poetry, spoken word, short speeches, and music. PHS is also holding daily trivia contests and essay contests and class projects. On Friday, February 16th, student assemblies will be held in the auditorium, Ridgewood St. Gym, and Main Gym, featuring guest speakers, dance, drama, and vocal performances. PHS Divas of the Den and Student March, including those two. Peoria High School's Black History Month Family Showcase on Thursday, February 22nd, from 6:00 to 8:30 p.m. in the atrium and foyer, will feature a living museum, soul food cafe, band, drama, vocal and dance performances, and a community vendor fair. Finally, Manual Academy will celebrate Black History Month with a family dinner theater on Wednesday, February 21st. African attire is strongly encouraged. The evening begins from 5:30 to 6:30 p.m. with a walkthrough of the history and visual displays. Dinner will be served at 6:30 p.m. with student performances and guest speakers, including Superintendent Dr. Karat. To RSVP for the Manual Black History Month Dinner Theater, please use a form on the Manual Academy website. Then also, I am pleased to announce the formation of a collaborative project between the Foster College of Business at Bradley University, including two student groups, Beta Alpha Psi, the Accounting Honor Society, and the Association of Latino Professionals for America, also known as Alpha. And the Peoria Public Schools will result in the donation of 10 SAT prep books at each high school library, as well as mentoring opportunities between Peoria Public High School students and Bradley University students. Dr. Simon Petrovic, an advisor for Bradley's Beta Alpha Psi, chapter-acquired grant funding to pay for the books, as well as other expenses associated with the mentoring program. The Bradley students will mentor Peoria Public School high school students their variety of avenues this spring, including meeting with Avid classes, speaking at grade-level assemblies, and providing tutoring during Saturday and after-school prep classes. This is an exciting partnership, and I hope it continues into the coming years. I'd like to thank Becky Wood, Simon Petrovic, the Alpha Faculty Advisor, and Mr. Walsh for their guidance on this project.
Thank you, Ms. Sherman. Ms. Jackson?
Avid Showcase. This Friday, February 16th, from 9:00 to 1:30, Franklin Primary Staff and Students will welcome approximately 30 guests from Springfield, East Peoria, Harvard, and Eppingham to its advancement via individual determination showcase, Avid. This is Franklin's fifth Avid Showcase, which allows educators from other districts to come see what Avid is all about and see it in action in a recognized school. Franklin is one of the only two schools in Illinois to be featured as a showcase school this year. This year Franklin is proud to have student involvement in presenting at the showcase. The student leaders involved are from Franklin, Calvin Coolidge, and Peoria High School. Franklin Staff welcomes school board members and other guests with open arms to attend the showcase. Parent University. February, Parent University will be held at Peoria Riverplex on Thursday, February 22nd, from 5:00 to 8:00, hosted by Valeska Hinton Early Childhood Education Center, Woodruff Career and Technical Center, and Jamison. The principals of these buildings are here tonight to tell us more about the event. We ask the principals to come to the podium.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As you heard, our schools, Jamison, Valeska, and Woodruff Career and Technical Center, are hosting the Parent University this month. Our bulletin boards are behind you. This month's event will be held at the Peoria Riverplex on Thursday, February 22nd, from 5:00 p.m. until 8:00 p.m. There are six Knowledgees Power Sessions that parents may choose from to attend with their students. They include social-emotional learning, snack academics, special needs, English language learners, playing while learning, and district curriculum.
In addition to the Knowledgees Power Sessions, families will be able to swim and participate in either a dance class to pop-rock or hip-hop music, or a class especially for sitting in a chair, stretching out your muscles. Swim attire is required to use the pool. Woodruff students, especially the barber students, will be providing haircuts, and the cosmetologists will be doing -- this doesn't seem to cooperate with me -- nail polishes. Meals will be catered by Russo's Catering. Buses will be provided from all three of our schools, plus Manual Academy and Peoria High School. If you decide to ride on one of the buses, please plan to be on the bus by 4:30. They will leave each site by 4:40. Don't forget to bring your booklet -- wherever mine is here -- to have it stamped. If you have five stamps, you'll be able to ride the Spirit of Peoria bus at our last Parent University of the year in April. For details and to make reservations, go to peoriapublicschools.org. Thank you.
Thank you.
Those Who Excel: Nomination Packets for the 2018 Those Who Excel Awards are available online at www.poriapublicschools.org. The nomination deadline is Friday, March 30th, at 4:00 p.m. Peoria Public Schools staff, parents, and volunteers are encouraged to begin choosing nominees and completing their nomination packets now. Each nomination must include a statement by the nominator, letters of recommendation, and a statement by the nominee. The nomination committee comprised of a past Donald Ferris Classroom Teacher of the Year, a Peoria Public Schools Foundation staff member, a retired administrator, a current administrator, and representatives from Those Who Excel District Sponsor. Red Brand Credit Union, who will review nominations in April. Winners will be announced at our all-staff convocation event in August. And finally, congratulations to the Peoria Public Schools Foundation and volunteers, including Amanda Campbell and Andrea Tortora, who assisted me in planning the Peoria School House Open, the first one. If you weren't here at our last meeting, that was the first-of-its-kind mini-golf pub crawl to benefit the Peoria Public Schools Foundation. We raised $2,500, which was a great accomplishment for our first year, and competing teams and spectators had a great time. After the event, the Foundation staff identified a number of areas of specific need and elected to use the proceeds for middle-school athletic uniforms and equipment. So we look forward to having a bigger and better event next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? All right. So now we are at our Community Contribution Award. Tonight's Community Contribution Award goes to Mr. Jim Combs of the East Bluff Community Center. Located in the former St. Bernard School, the center invites organizations with programs to use the community rooms and equipment to serve the people of the East Bluff with a focus on recreation, education, and family development. The center works with Boys and Girls Club of Greater Peoria, the YMCA, to provide activities for neighborhood young people, including Glen Oak Community Learning Center students, such as after-school tutoring and basketball programs. The East Bluff Community Center's Food Bank serves over 150 to 200 families each month and houses WAZU Peoria Community Radio and the Peoria Opportunities Foundation. The East Bluff Community Center is a vibrant and active hub for Peoria's East Bluff. Mr. Combs, are you with us this evening? Good evening, sir. Would you please come to the podium and share more about the East Bluff Community Center? Good evening.
Good evening. Thanks. We appreciate that. You know, I spent 43 years in education, and I feel still a little nervous here tonight. My tenure for public school for Peoria was Greeley, and I was down there for some years. And I've spent a lot of time in neighborhood redevelopment, too, when I was with Mrs. Ross and a few people.
Years and years.
Lot of things. Lot of stories we can say, I can tell you about that. But yeah, thank you very much, because we're very happy with the idea that we were able to get ahold of an old, retired school. It's old, but it's in good shape. The bones are good. It's the old St. Bernard's building up on the corner of Kansas and New York Street. We're about four blocks from the Glen Oak Learning Center. We were, at one time, as you all know, if you know something about history, going to be a little closer to the new center at the time we were going to be a part of that to a certain extent. But yet, things worked out differently, because we had a lot of students up there, and they needed a room. And so therefore, we went five blocks west, came in this building. Now we have the building being used for community purposes. And I -- you gave a better, actually rendition than I could with my brochure. And we're very happy to have Dr. Karat, and we've had various people over there going through the building. We have -- we're proud of it, and we are -- we call it vision. We have a vision. But more than that, we have a venue. We have a venue to anybody on the East Bluff who needs a place to have meetings, to have a place to celebrate, to have a place to put some education, some informal community education in. We have the place. And we want to definitely understand the word partnership, and we're looking for ways to partner with District 150. And again, we want to be able to say to you that you're welcome here. I hope the board members will take advantage of maybe coming to the center, walking through with me. I'm there Monday, Wednesday, and Fridays. We have a good chance for you, if you want, Saturday morning to see a very active food pantry. As you know, we have concerns right now about a grocery store leaving the area, and we're worried, concerned about people getting the right amount of food. And we are there on a constant basis. Saturday morning is our big day. YMCA's there, playing basketball on Saturday morning. The Boys and Girls Club are there Monday through Friday up in our old junior high area. And I say "old" because I went to that school as a boy, and yes, they did have school in my day as a boy. But the fact is, we are -- I went to Woodruff also. So I'm very happy to say that I'm home again, and it's a good way for me to sort of end a career at education and social service. So thank you very much. You're welcome. I appreciate the fact is that you're interested in us. We hope you'll come and share that love that you share with your students here at 150. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Combs? On behalf of the Board of Education, Dr. Karat has a small token of our appreciation for you.
Good trip. Glad you're around.
It takes a village, right?
Oh, it does. It does.
Absolutely. Thank you for all that you do. Thank you, sir. I'll come back and visit again.
Thank you. We have a student showcase. Ms. Steele, Marcy Steele, are you here?
Yeah.
All right. She has the first part of this. Showcase our students. We always like to do that.
Good evening. For the past two school years, during the winter break, Peoria Public Schools has encouraged our K-8 students to read throughout the winter break to add a competitive spirit to that. We've created the Snow Is Falling Books Are Calling Competition for all primary and middle schools in our district. At the January 22nd Board of Education meeting, we recognized the schools for that competition. As you recall, Washington Gifted was the school, the middle school that earned the most points as a school during that competition. So tonight, what we would like to do is recognize the students from Washington Gifted that exceeded our district expectations during that week-long competition. So at this time, I'd like to invite Dave Poles up, the principal, to the podium, so that he can acknowledge those top 10 readers from Washington Gifted and the amount of points they earned during that week. When he calls your name, if you're here, if you'll come up, we'll recognize you, and I will give you a medal. Okay?
Thanks. Hi, Dave.
Thank you. Thank you. I guess I better move this up a little bit. Mr. Combs is having a little trouble with it here, so we'll see what we can do. Thank you again. And our kids, I'll tell you, one person I do want to introduce, in case I'm remiss, is Ms. Heather Brown. I'd like you to stand before. Heather runs our library, our website, you name it, she does it. And I did want to ask her, she is a primary reason, along with our staff, of why our kids do the job they do. So again, thank you, Ms. Brown. One of the things with Washington, these kids do a fantastic job. They always ask if the library's open when it's recess, so of course, they'll skip a sandwich, but they won't skip a book. So we're always happy to have them. I'd like to, first of all, starting, I guess, to go down this way.
Yeah.
Okay. First of all, Katrina Moser, 7th grade, 44.5 points. Next is Marissa Moser, 45.4, 8th place. They're very involved in our school, too, so. Number eight, Catherine DeBosh, 6th place, 45.9. Come on along. Come on over here, Catherine. Also, Catherine sold three boxes of Girl Scout cookies. Half of them were my dinner tonight, so we're good to go. Number seven, Monica Ash, 8th place, 47.5 points. There you are. Jack Griswold, 7th place, 49 points. Jack, I saw you here somewhere. There you are. Number five, Haruni Boparachi, with 62.8 points. Haruni, I think I saw you here somewhere. There you are. Number four, L. Seshal, 6th place, 68 points. Down in front. You got the front-row seat there. Excellent. Number three, Kirsten Polk, 6th place, 83 points. And Alana Jacoby, 5th grade, I'm sorry, not 5th place, 5th grade, I'm sorry, 93.9. And that's pretty good, isn't it? And number one, Lauren Eldarazi, 8th, 170.2. Outstanding. So again, thank you very much. Again, you want to get some of the pictures in here? I think we got our complete list. Yes, did you want to?
170 points in one week, and then where's our, where's my 5th grade young lady? Right here. 5th grader had the second-most points in the entire district. Does a 5th grader over 6th, 7th, and 8th grade. It's really impressive.
Absolutely. Heather, come on up, please. I'm sorry, I was, you're supposed to come up, too.
Would all the parents of these students please stand? We want to also thank you, because we know that you're behind the success of the children, and thank you very much for being committed. Okay, now, the next we have math counts winners. Ms. Susan Gobine?
Good evening, President Ross, Superintendent Karat, and board members and audience members. It's my pleasure to present to you the winners from the 26th Annual Math Counts Competition. It was held on Saturday, January 20th, at Lindbergh Middle School. We had nine of our schools, 78 mathletes. It was a blast. I hope you guys had as much fun as I did. Just to let you know, Math Counts is a national competition. Our district competition is kind of a warm-up for the regional competition at Bradley University, which will be held on February 24th. And our teams have their fingers crossed that they'll do well enough, that they'll qualify for the state meet, the state Math Counts Tournament, and then perhaps the national tournament in Washington, D.C. So that's really exciting. So the way that Math Counts works, it's three rounds. We've got round one, which is a sprint round. It's 30 problems in 40 minutes, no calculator. It tests their procedural skill and fluency, so we've got some really fast mathletes this year. Round two is the target round. Kids get eight really significant, rich mathematical tasks that they have to solve independently. And then round three is the team round. It's where teams get to collaborate, communicate, and work together to solve 10 problems. So it's really an exciting competition. That day, the kids receive plaques, and certificates, and medals, and lots of candy, and we had a blast. Lots of donuts, too. All right. So we've got individual winners, and then we've got some team winners also that I want to acknowledge tonight. So the first award that we always give is called the Best of Team. This is the mathlete on each team that has the highest combined sprint round and target round total. Okay, so if you are here, come on up. The Best of Team for Calvin Coolidge, we've got a tie, which was really cool that day. Adriana Beck and Harper Nereg, from Calvin Coolidge. And Calvin Coolidge coaches Tyler Pat and Michelle Cooby. If you're here, stand up as well. And Best of Team from Lincoln, Nikaya Sanderson. And Lincoln's coach is Holly Walker. Next, we have Lindbergh, and Best of Team from Lindbergh was Nick McCully. And Nick's coach, or Lindbergh's coach, is Melissa Hammond. And Best of Team for Manuel was Deja Williams-Hawkins. And Manuel's coach is Michael Halford. I know he's back here. And Best of Team for Mark Bills, Muhammad Ali. And Mark Bill's coach is Kimberly Smith. And Best of Team for Rolling Acres, Jeremiah Singleton. And Rolling Acres coach, Beth Purse. Best of Team for Roosevelt, Savoy Jenkins. And Roosevelt's coach is Tom Jakowski. Best of Team for Sterling is Cyrus Pierce. And Sterling is coached by Rachel Keno. And Best of Team for Von Steuben, Michael Krieger. And Von Steuben's coach was Katie Welch. And those are the Best of Teams. All right. We have three more individual awards that we always give away. The sprint round champion, so again, this is the person who has the fastest pencil at Lindbergh on that Saturday. And the sprint round champion was from Mark Bills, Arthur Vermillion. All right. And the target round champion was from Lindbergh, Nick McCully. And then the overall individual champion for all of Math Counts in Peoria Public Schools, from Rolling Acres, Jeremiah Singleton. All right. Congratulations to all the individual winners. All right. Next, I want to acknowledge a couple of teams. The first one is the Team Spirit Award. It's a really great award. At the beginning of Math Counts, every year we start with a parade of mathletes, kind of like the Olympics, and they create a poster and a cheer. And this first team, they exemplified team spirit the whole morning. It was great. I really appreciated their enthusiasm, and they just seemed to, like, really love the whole entire event. They were excited all morning long. So the team spirit this year, if I am not mistaken, I think there was a backflip involved, too. The Team Spirit Award goes to Manual Academy, coached by Michael Halford. And the team members were Sari Cardoza-Saints, Jameer Walters, Zulema Ruiz, Bryn Stanfield, Deja Williams-Hawkins, Michelle Quintero, and Hemana Silva, Silva Hanosa. Congratulations, Manuel. All right. And then our overall team champion at Math Counts 2018 was Lindbergh Middle School, first place in Peoria Public Schools. Come on up. Coached by Melissa Hammond, and the team members, come on up, you guys, so you can have a picture. Anaya Quals, Tanner Barnes, Ida Wilks, Nick McCully, Joseph Hureman, Kylie Allen, and Truck, Matthew Packard, Shadi Atrash, and Marcus Winters. Congratulations, Lindbergh. All right. So any parents or guardians of mathletes, will you please stand up? Parents or guardians of the mathletes. Thanks for all your support of math education. And any building administrators here, thanks for your support as well, building administrators. All right. So one more round for all the mathletes. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Karat. Most improved?
They may be dismissed if you want to.
They may not.
Congratulations, everyone. Ms. Gobine, she always does an amazing job with that. Thank you, kids. I know it's almost past your bedtime, right, or you do have homework? So feel free, parents, to sneak out.
Or not.
We'll give you 30 seconds. Congratulations again. I'm really excited there. Really love math, because, you know, hey, guys, don't forget your Algebra I classes, Algebra II. Get good grades in those, all A's. Your persistence in college is unbelievable. You get good grades in those classes, you'll graduate from college. Right, team?
All right. Most improved?
Thank you, President Ross.
Attendance.
Attendance, attendance. It's very, very important. But guess what? We, the flu and other seasonal diseases definitely impacted our January attendance figures. Actually, in fact, we've heard a lot about Lindbergh, the third-place school for most improved attendance, Lindbergh. They actually remained the exact percentage they had in January. And in second place, Ridgewood's High School, they And in second place, Richwoods High School, they saw the worst flu numbers in December, but improved its January's attendance over the previous year by 1.86 percent, going from 91.9 percent to 93.8 percent. So Mr. Elliott, I know you're working hard for 95, but you're getting it, and I know, because we talked in December, all the illnesses and so forth, but that's still impressive. And first place, Peoria High increased its attendance, its January's attendance by 3.12 percent, from 79.4 percent in January of last year to 82.61 percent in January of 2018. So I'll tell you what, let's ask our third place, is Mrs. Malley here, Lindbergh? Ms. Malley, and Mr. Elliott, and Dr. Coleman, why don't you come up and just share a little bit of what you're doing quickly? I know sometimes it becomes repetitious, but because of the weather, sometimes it forces us to do things differently, right? So congratulations, third place, Mrs. Lindbergh.
Thank you. And at Lindbergh, we just keep focusing on that attendance and making kids aware of what their attendance is. We've got some kids who meet regularly with a teacher as a check-in, check-out, and we provide some incentives, and also just try to make school fun and make it important so that they understand the importance of being there every day.
Congratulations, Mrs. Malley, and good job with Math Counts also. Mr. Elliott, second place.
Yes, we like first, but we're working on it.
You're close.
Yeah, yeah. To echo Ms. Malley's comments, just a culture piece, so try to create the ultimate learning experience for our kids, make school fun. We saw a bump with our Winter Fest, Winter Homecoming. Special thanks to our PTO, who gives, provides monthly celebrations for all of our students, who are 95% or greater, and they do bake sales for us and raise a lot of money. So we appreciate that.
Awesome, thank you, sir. And Dr. Coleman, first place.
Although we did improve, we're not where we want to be. We still have a lot of growth to do. I brought two friends with me tonight, Mr. Turner, our homeschool facilitator, and Dontasia Thomas, please come here. They are, Dontasia is the leader of our school group to try to increase attendance at Peoria High. They wore their PHS Dash-to-Class shirts, and I want them to just kind of give you a quick overview of what we're doing, and we'll make it quick, Mr.-
Awesome, thank you, Dr. Coleman. Let's hear it.
Well, we meet every Wednesday, and we just try to make sure we incorporate all the kids into what we want to do. We have 95% attendance. We have what we call, here on Times, the hot chips, where we'll go to the atrium and find the kids that are coming in consistently late, and give them a ticket, and they have to attend, be there three days in a row without having an absence or a tardy.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. So it's working, right?
Yes, it is.
Hello. So I designed these shirts for everybody to notice. So we were, we are really trying to get people there every day. We know people have different things going on in life, but we want everybody there. So like, we try to phone a friend, like, if you're not in school, like, come to school, come to school. Like, we're just trying to improve attendance so much, so we can be better, a better school.
Awesome, thank you. And guess what? You have, for the month of January, you do have bragging rights for the entire district, all 27. You guys are number one in terms, so it's paying off. So Mary Sherman, who is student board member, has a banner that you can display, and it says, yeah, brag about most improved attendance for the month of January. So keep it up. Let's try for 95%, okay?
We're going to get there.
Thank you, I love that. And one final thing regarding attendance, we do not, we do want to recognize Northmore Primary School as the only school with a rate of 95% or higher in January. Actually, Northmore experienced an attendance rate of 96.4 percent. So, parents, those of you who are listening, remind the children to wash your hands, and drink fluid frequently, and get plenty of rest, and that will help. Until, some of our kids still have that virus thing going on, so until the virus runs its course, let's continue to, the hands, all right? So thanks again, congratulations to Northmore, and Peoria High, and Richwoods, and Lindbergh, and all the other schools. We have a number of schools that are very, very, very close, but again, as a district, we really took a big hit with the weather and all the germs. So our next recognition tonight is to recognize teachers, three teachers who are, I've just really been impressed with them. I call them our teachers who are leading our academy courses. They're literally planning and preparing presentations and to their peers. So I'm asking, she's already there, Ms. Gershnech, who is over curriculum instruction and assessment, to tell us a little bit about why they're being recognized. Ms. G?
Thank you, Dr. Carratt. Tonight, I'm presenting to you our Teacher Academy instructors for this school year. Two of our programs have already launched, and our third one starts next week. The Teacher Academy is a collaborative between the PFT, Peoria Federation of Teachers, and Peoria Public Schools. And we send teachers to become internal trainers. So we're working on teacher internal capacity here at our district, so they will repeat the courses over the following year. So we're picking out courses that we think are going to be important for us to keep moving forward with. So, for example, this summer, we're adding ELL and cultural competency and a reading comprehension piece. But what I'd like to do is have each of them come up, I'm going to introduce you to them, and let them tell you a little bit about their courses and how things are going. So I have Amanda Brown, Mauricia Page, and Casey Fritsch, come on up.
Good evening. What if I were to tell you that the English spelling system makes perfect sense? You'd probably retort with a list of words that break the rules, or tell me something about your foreign neighbor who conducted a heist and didn't follow the I before E rule. The class that I am teaching is the Multi-Sensory ELA Strategies for Tier One. It's a course that kind of morphed out of an AFT course for, it was a very specific course for students with disabilities, and we realized that we needed a broader focus to reach more of our teachers, so we're reaching out to more strategies that can be implemented in the core instruction in the classroom. We're studying multi-sensory techniques to bring tactile, visual, auditory strategies into play, which we know from neuroscience is the best way for students to learn, and we're combining that with a deep understanding of the structure of the English language and why it actually makes sense. So if you want to know why there's a B in doubt or a G in sign, feel free to join us any Tuesday night and see our course.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Mauricia Page, and I am teaching the Thinking Math, 3rd through 5th grade course this semester. This course was created by AFT teachers to help teachers, help students build a better conceptual understanding of place value, multiplication, division, and fractions. As research has shown, these are very, very important topics for our students at this grade level, and for them to be successful in middle school and high school, we really need to set that foundation now. So Thinking Math is introducing strategies to teachers to help them get the students engaged in math, not just getting an answer and moving to the next problem, but manipulating math, representing math, justifying math, explaining math, just really doing math and thinking about math. We want to create critical thinkers in our students. We want to create flexible thinkers in our students. And this Thinking Math course is going to help our teachers achieve that goal. So I'm very honored to be the one to share that with my colleagues in the district, and I'm excited about it.
Thank you.
The class that I'm teaching is Foundations of Effective Teaching 1. It is a two-part class. Foundations of Effective Teaching 2 will come to our district hopefully, and within a few years, the AFT is working on revamping that program. But we focus on pretty much any aspect of teaching that you can imagine. We start with beginning-of-the-year classroom management, and we do a ton of hands-on, get up out of your seat, working together in teams and partners activities to dissect the current research and trends with everything from beginning-of-the-year classroom management, teacher praise, homework, interactive direct instruction, effective group management. So pretty much anything related to teaching, we talk about, we look at some research, and we have a lot of fun. My class and I, every Thursday, we get together, and we start off with Circle of Friends, and we always play a game, and I love hearing how they're so excited for Thursdays, because usually Thursday's like, oh, it's almost Friday, you know? But it's a way to get them pumped up and excited, and so far, we've gotten a ton of great feedback of the strategies that they've taken back into their classes, that the kids have loved, and enjoyed playing the games that we play in class, and so sharing those strategies with their students as well.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Aren't they inspirational? You guys inspire me. Thank you, and keep up the great work. Susan?
So we're going to collect some applications for a new round of teachers, so if you know of a great teacher out there, bring us their name, and we'll approach them to be our next instructors.
Can we make sure they get a nice Peoria Public Schools t-shirt?
Oh, of course. We can raid the closet for them.
Thank you, and kudos to Jeff Atkins-Dutrow, PFT president, Scott Chiflin, and Tony Strong, our leadership team, who are continuing to work collaboratively. So you guys are amazing. If you need anything, let us know, but do your thing and have fun. And that's just a small representation of Peoria Public Schools teachers. So thank you.
Take care, Ms. Brian.
We have more teachers doing some amazing things and going above and beyond. The final thing I have is, finally, tonight, we would like to recognize six staff, and not only teachers, actually staff members also in our district, who were recently named PNC grant winners. And this is actually a very competitive grant. It's open to all of the staff in Peoria County, and five of our teachers are here, and I would like to invite them to the podium. Unfortunately, Ms. Lynn from Lincoln will not be able to attend tonight due to a graduation class that she's taking, right, Chris? So, but for each, we have Denise Smith, administrator from Harrison, Mr. Joe Baumgardner, come up, guys, if you're there, Richwoods, Cheryl Helm from Treewind Therapeutic School, Michael Holland from Von Steuben, Kimberly Keith. This is really amazing. What they do is, and those grants, it cannot be a boring idea. They're always looking for innovative ideas and new things, so we can just kind of go one at a time. Ms. Smith, since you're first, why don't you tell us just quickly what your idea is and how much money you received?
Good evening, Dr. Carratt, distinguished members of the school board and those in attendance tonight. My name is Denise Smith, and I am the Assistant Principal at Harrison Community Learning Center, the pride of the South Side, under the fearless leadership of Mrs. Daniels. I want to share my spotlight tonight with Ms. Cobb, because she is the inspiration for the PNC grant that we received. It was $999. There's a story behind that, too. At Harrison, we HAWKS FLIP, not backflips nor aerials, but F-L-I-P, Fun Learning Interactive Programs. Ms. Cobb and her band of enthusiastic volunteers provide for our students an after-school program Monday through Thursday from 3:30 until 5:00 at no cost to any parents. Many times, the funding comes from her pocket. The flip-over cooking to learn will be implemented for all 123 students from ages K through 6th grade. The students will be taught nutrition, how to choose and prepare foods that are good for them, and provide nourishment to develop both mentally and physically. As they are preparing the meals, the activity will be used to motivate the students to read, comprehend the nonfiction texts of the recipes. They will be able to practice sequencing, which is an important skill to develop both math and reading. Through action of combining elements in cooking, we'll introduce them to the science around them and further inspire their inquiring minds. Taste and consistency will be part of their experiments as they add heat or cold. In addition to cooking foods that are common staples, these students will learn social studies of different cultures, see the recipes, and the reason the culture affects cuisine. As they cook, they will be journaling the recipes, their experience and reflections. Students will also have the opportunity to make modifications to the recipes as we stretch their inquiry skills to provide good information for themselves. Last, but not least, they will be able to demonstrate their ability to work in small collaborative groups. As we know, this is a vital skill for success in today's colleges and workforce. They will learn safety as they use small appliances and the stove for cooking. As they serve their peers, they will practice good hygiene and health considerations in regard to cleanliness of what is being served. Acceptable table manners will also be addressed and practiced to further develop their character and social interactions. All skills that are learned in these exercises can be applied to real life and used as they continue to be lifelong learners. Thank you, Mrs. Cobb, for your dedication, and thank you to PNC for your financial contribution to this program.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Ms. Cobb, would you like to make some comments? I know you're not shy.
I can talk to my students. I don't do groups. FLIP is my baby. This is our second year, and we have been blessed two years in a row to receive funding for the program, so it's really working. The kids love it. Even when I want to cancel, they're like, no, we got FLIP, so-
How many do you serve?
Uh, we have about 100. Yeah, K through 6th grade. And the kids love it, I love it. It's just, it's a great thing to have.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Smith. Mr. Baumgardner, Richwoods, physics?
Chemistry now.
Chemistry now, okay. He's an amazing science teacher.
Thank you. Uh, let's see. Hello. My name, it's what we were talking about back there. It's weird how we can be, teach every day in class and talk in front of everybody, and then we get in front of a different group, and we're all nervous back there. All right, uh, let's see, my name is Joe Baumgardner. I work at Richwoods High School. Let's see, I'm a chemistry teacher there. The PNC grant I got was for $1,000 to start a science club over there. So every month between, we have somewhere between about 45 and 70 students who show up, and we just explore a variety of topics. The funds that I'll use from PNC will go to taking them on a, we're going on a field trip to the Museum of Science and Industry at the end of this month, and get to pay for their lunch, and they get to go to the big screen theater and all sorts of stuff. We're forming a group who's going to go around to some elementary schools and teach some of the elementary students, like do science demonstrations for them, and send home little science kits that they can do with their family. And that's what I've thought of so far.
Yeah, I love it. Beautiful. Thank you, sir. Awesome.
Yeah, thank you to PNC, and thank you to Mr. Elliott.
Mr. Holland, are you up? You're trying to be a gentleman, I know. Everybody was budging.
Yeah, I tried. And we were just talking, Joe and I were just talking, when I was at Richwoods. I, too, get very nervous around other people, around adults mainly, kids, no problem. Adults, kind of crazy, but I don't know why. It just happens. My program, I got $1,000 from PNC, and I've always thought about PE as a lab. Every academic area can be related to physical education in some way, shape, or form. Obviously, in physics, when you talk about the movement of the body, you're going to have physics and science and those types of things. Math, geometry, you look at the layout of any kind of court or field, there's all kinds of geometry there. And of course, if you keep score, we know our accountants, they love to have all that data, so we've got plenty of it in physical education if we just start to take that. So that was the first fold. My plan is actually twofold, is to do that as, seeing PE as a lab for the academic area. The other one is, I want to use the sports. We've been given the initiative this year with the state to focus more on fitness level. Of course, I could use a little bit of that myself, as you can see. But the physical element, the fitness element, we need to look at our sports, because they want to take that away, in a sense, the way you can look at it as. But they want to take the sports away, well, let's just take the skills that are in the sports and utilize those to fulfill the fitness element. So we still have fun playing basketball, but it's not just going to be go out and throw the wall up and play games. It's going to, let's practice, learn the skills, so that we can advance our students even further in a competitive way. So that's basically the gist of mine. So thank you very much, appreciate it. Thank you, PNC as well.
Thank you. Have fun. Who's next, Cheryl or Kimberly?
All right. I will try to be short and sweet.
Keith, Von Steuben. And we have actually two winners from Von Steuben, which is amazing. Mr. Holland is also from Von Steuben.
We were very, very happy to have both of us.
We were very, very happy to have both of us be able to win. Thank you, Mr. Ryan, for being here as well. Mine is, I teach college and career readiness, so the students are on the computers, we're doing wonderful things, we're pushing through Career Cruising, we're doing great things with that. We were lucky enough to have my on this year as well, which helped with all the reading that we talked about earlier tonight. What I wanted to be able to do with this grant money is get students up out of the seats, working collaboratively together, because I haven't had the ability to do a lot of that this year, like I said, with initiatives and things that we're pushing through. So two different engineering aspects that I'm going to bring in, we're gonna be working with making ice cream, but not just making it, sampling it, but talking about all of the aspects that go into it, flavor tasting, things like that. That will be really fun. I'm super excited about that one. And having them research, come up with their own ideas. And then, safety helmets, talking about, even just this past week, there were things on the news about students and concussions and all of that, just bringing that extra awareness. Great experiments that go along with that. So it's really tying in all those STEM aspects, and of course, we'll tie it to careers and what they can do for their futures. So looking forward to being able to implement these with fifth through eighth grade.
Awesome. Thank you, Ms.
Thank you.
And last but not least, Tree Wing Therapeutic Center, Mrs. Cheryl Hahn.
Before anything, I want to thank Dr. Carratt and thank Ms. Andrews for your support.
You're welcome.
Before I tell you about my grant, I want to honor somebody, too. I was never in this office or this room until about eight years ago, when I came back to Peoria. And I was talking to Dr. Bell earlier, and it really hit me. My dad served on the board from '69 to '77, and as president, handed me my diploma 41 years ago. And 41 years ago, if you thought, or I thought for a minute I was gonna be a teacher, I would just start laughing and say, not on your life. So I decided I was gonna study medicine, and I was going to study acting. And when I came back to Peoria, I started teaching. And I use my acting and my medicine every day of the week. PNC has really, really been wonderful to us. Last year, I won a grant that helped us to build a monarch garden and sanctuary. Between PNC and Kiwanis Club Southwest, we put together the most awesome sanctuary. And the lessons that we learned from it were not just classroom lessons. One night, as an example, vandals destroyed our whole garden. And the kids, rather than being upset and mad and angry, we learned what it was like to work as a team, to put everything back together again, and to grow that garden. It was amazing. And the lessons this fall, from caterpillars to butterflies and cocoons and tagging them, it was phenomenal. My passion is science, but with the teacher shortage this year, I found myself teaching other subjects that I hadn't quite planned on. So I decided I'm going to take the same enthusiasm and energy into my English classes as I did to my science. And so consequently, this grant is going to supply us with reading materials, because if you know anything about our students at Tree Wing Therapeutic Center, they have to be very interested in things, they have to be very engaged, and it has to be relevant to them. So Annabelle Lee and The Village Blacksmith by Henry Wadsworth Longfellow just were not gonna work. So I found some reading curriculum that is relevant, it's got to do with the things that they are experiencing on the street, and the kids are just eating it up. So thank you, PNC Bank.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks to the principals, Mr. Ryan, Ms. Andrews, are you here? Please stand, Ms. Andrews, and wave. Mr. Ryan, and Mr. Elliott, I'm not sure if you're still here. Here you are. Congratulations. As a principal, I always poked my teachers, and I made sure I got at least one winner, so I know you do that, too, behind. Let's see. Oh, Ms. Daniels. I love you, Ms. Daniel. Sorry, you're hiding, I can't see you. Harrison, what do you say, the pride of the South Side? All right. I love it. So congratulations, teachers. You guys are amazing. Thank you for going above and beyond, and your enthusiasm, we love it. I know it exudes through your kids every day. Thank you. Woods, the Quests have a winner also, PNC, this year? I thought they did. Okay. All right.
Yes, we did.
You did? Okay. I thought I saw them at banquet. Yep?
Yes, we did.
Thank you, President Ross.
We are now at the place on our agenda that provides an opportunity for members of the community to address the board with your comments and suggestions. There are some issues we are not at liberty to discuss in public, such as personnel and other executive session topics. However, if you have a specific personnel concern or personal concern that needs to be addressed, we will get a staff person to help you. In addition, board members, phone numbers, emails are listed on our website, PSD150.org. When you are recognized, please come to the podium, state your name for our records. Each person will be given five minutes to speak. As a reminder, no one under age 18 may address the board unless accompanied by a parent, teacher, guardian, without the consent of the majority of the board. Our first speaker is Mr. Terry Knapp.
Good evening. You have before you a program that I brought from the Illinois Music Education Conference. I bring this to you. John Garcia was my son's best friend, is today, graduated from Woodruff in '94. His son, Mason, plays in this band. If you open to the inside section, you'll see a band from Victor J. Andrew High School in the suburbs. If you open to the first page, on this section right here, it talks about their music program. It is sad that schools in the state of Illinois have programs like this, when our high schools, in many cases, have no fine arts program, have no bands, or very little in the way of bands. As I said, Central, which is a fine arts high school, had 29 people in their band this year. And I know that's a result of 10 years of a superintendent that didn't really care, as far as I'm concerned, about fine arts, and we're coming back. But when you look at this, and you see what a community can do, this is what band is. This is what choral music is, if you read their insert. So please, continue to press for better fine arts in Peoria. Moving on, in 2010, Woodruff High School was closed, 900 students were displaced, who walked to school, basically, and were put on buses to Manuel and Central. They've been on buses ever since. I've urged you to do research to find out if these students even go to school today from the North End. It's truly tragic and sad that this occurred. The mayor said, we don't have enough kids for four high schools. Closed Woodruff, and about six weeks later, gave a gentleman in the community a, what do you want to call it? A charter high school, okay? The charter high school came to town. I went to the meetings of the fourth high school. We now have four high schools. We had four high schools before, but we didn't have enough students for four high schools. Got four high schools today. I can't figure that one out. I've said that before at this podium. It's important for you to understand that these students have been displaced. It is also important that you understand, I went to the civic center and listened to the first presentation of the people from Quest that came into town from the concept schools, and said that the students would be, 100% of them would graduate, 100% of them would go to college. I heard this over and over and over again. We had 40 students two years ago, I think 39 two years ago, graduate from Quest High School. We had about 40 this year, if that many, I don't know, was not in town for the graduation. It is important for you to understand that they were gonna have a STEM curriculum. STEM curriculum with 40 students in a senior class? I don't see how that's possible. I pick up the Journal Star and look at this article. This article, to quote Hillary Clinton, is deplorable. I mean, after seven years, and all the things that didn't happen this year, and suing teachers who left the district or left Quest, that's unheard of. Teachers leave districts all the time. Their only possibility of penalty is holding their certificates. A third of the teachers at Quest High School don't even have certificates, don't even have certificates. And they're teaching high school students in the STEM program, and they've never even had training and certification for teaching in high schools. It's important for you to also understand that students' records weren't sent. I mean, how, I mean, this is just common sense, that the students' records be sent over to the high school for the students coming to that school. They're going to have selection this coming up next month. Again, I've gone to those selections. They select students and say there's a lot, I mean, a standby list. The high school kids can't even be on a standby list. They don't replace the high school students. They simply add more grade school students, so they get their 600 number, so they can get their full funding from the school district. Funding next year, by the way, is going up in the state of Illinois. They're trying to get charter schools to get the same funding. Right now, you're saving about $600,000 by having 600 students in the Quest schools. That's not gonna happen coming up in the future. You're gonna be paying equal to what all the students hear. I'm not saying you shouldn't, but that's one of your impetus in this district, is to save $600,000 and let Quest, you know, work with these people for less, pay the teachers less, give them less benefits, and wonder why they leave. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Is there any response to audience presentation? Next on the agenda are information items. And the first information item is the Quest Charter School update. Is that you, Ms. Wood? All right. Welcome.
Thank you. Dr. Wood. We're just gonna get situated here.
Do you have a PowerPoint?
Yes, we need the screen.
Okay, great. We'll move around.
Thank you.
My name's Tom Fleegy. I am the president of the Quest Charter School Academy Board. I'd like first to recognize our teachers and principals and assistant principals that are here with us tonight. Please stand up. We're very proud of them. I'd also like to recognize board members that are here tonight as well. Board members, if you could please stand and be recognized. First thing I'd like to talk about is the history of Quest. As you know, we were started eight years ago originally with a management school, as you may know, but three years ago shifted over to self-management. That's when we hired Dr. Nicole Wood. She's here with us tonight. And also on my right is one of our student board members, Mr. Braxton Evans. So thank you both for being here as well. First thing, if you could go to the first slide, please, Jason?
One moment, please.
Curtis, can you help? He's got it. We might need Curtis.
Just trying to refresh. Such a rough ear, Curtis. We just got here. Yeah, that's all I did earlier. It's working.
We might need Curtis.
Just trying to refresh. Such a rough ear, Curtis.
We just got here.
Yeah, that's all I did earlier. It's working.
All things come to those who wait. As you can see on the board, our mission, and I won't read it to you, but the bottom line is, our mission is to provide a world-class educational environment for a diverse student population. Why we're formed, it's an alternative school, and it is a STEM school. Fact is, we're very proud of what we accomplished, and we're gonna tell you about that tonight as our annual report dictates. To bring you through the next couple of slides, I'd like Braxton Evans, our student board member, to take you through those. Braxton?
So Quest has six core values, and one of them being curious. Quest plans to have these core values implemented throughout the day while students follow. Quest has a big influence on the curious one, curiosity. In the STEM world, you need to be a real big problem solver and critical thinker, critical solver, who can solve those. I would like to recognize Dr. Nicole Wood as our executive director, Ms. Robert McCracken as our high school principal, if you could please stand, and Dr. Jason Serian as our middle school principal. Fleegy said, we were founded in the year 2010. We serve grades fifth through 12, and we have around 595 students currently. 51.5% of those students are male, and 48.5% of those students are female. And right now, we have 67 wonderful staff members. Today, we plan to answer these seven essential questions. Are we serving the children who need us? Are our students staying with us? Are our students progressing and achieving academically? Are our students taking the path to college? Are we attracting and retaining those top talents? Are we building a sustainable financial model? And question number seven, are we engaging our community? Back to Mr. Fleegy.
Question number one, are we serving the children who need us? As you can see, our stats are very similar to the district itself. In fact, since we are a charter school, our lottery is drawn directly from the district itself. Not surprisingly, reflects the district's demographics. 78% economically disadvantaged, 8% receive special education, 73% African-Americans, 10.5 Hispanic, 8.5 white, 7.6 multiracial, and a little less than 1% Asian and American Indians. Are our students staying with us? As you can see, our student retention for fiscal year '16 was 92%, and for fiscal year '17 is 91%. Our average daily attendance for fiscal year '17, 94%, and for fiscal year '17, 93%. Family engagement, which is measured across several different matrices, has for '16, 52%, and in '17, up to 70%.
We can't make it bigger?
It's stuck in the circle.
Okay, well...
92% of students report that they are...
I can, yeah, I can see. I can tell you a few stats. I think I remember them off the top of my head. And I should say that in front of you, you should have received one of our annual reports. So if you would take the time, all of our statistics from tonight's presentation plus more are in our annual report for you. But, you know, this student satisfaction, this comes from the Five Essentials Survey, which we give to our students, our staff, and our parents. And one of the... And so we have a lot of trend data since we opened our doors. And so with NWEA at the top there, you just see all of our students and the percent at or above grade level over time in the last few years. As you can see, reading is making a steady increase each year. Math is the area that we are really focused on. All right. Park is a huge celebration for us. We saw a four percent increase in our score from last year, I'm sorry, twenty sixteen to twenty seventeen compared with the state average of point seven percent growth. That's incredible, and I'm just hats off to our staff and our students. That is incredible growth. Our SAT last year was a baseline year, so it was the first year our students took that assessment. The baseline score is eight sixty-seven. Obviously, we want it much higher than that, and we're doing a number of different things in order to increase that score and really focus and help our students be successful on the SAT. All right, so, you know, as I said before, our ultimate mission and vision is that we get our students prepared to be accepted into a four-year university if that is the choice that they choose. And so this is a big question for us. Are our students taking the path to college? You can see that last year's graduating class, we had a ninety-five percent graduation rate. One of the things that I'm very proud of at Quest, we have a college and career counselor who works very hard, also with our student support manager. They just wrap around our scholars and help them with their applications to college and scholarships and whatever, whatever it takes. That is unbelievable, over $2 million in scholarships for these forty-two scholars. And forty-nine percent of our students went on to ICC. Period Promise is such a wonderful option for us, and fifty-one percent of our scholars went on to a four-year university. The other thing that was pretty exciting last year, in twenty sixteen, it was our first year to be able to offer dual credit, and as you can see, we had twenty-one percent of our seniors were eligible and enrolled. And this year, we don't even report our juniors here, but we do have juniors who are taking dual credit, but we have forty-three percent of our seniors enrolled in dual credit, so nearly doubled that from one year to the next, and we're so excited about that. Eighty percent of our freshmen are on track to graduate in four years. This would be our eighth graders at promotion, so they are our current freshman class, and some of our graduates from last year. All right, question five asks, are we attracting and retaining top talent? Our staff retention rate grew quite a bit from twenty sixteen to twenty seventeen at seventy-six percent. Maintained our administrative staff. And our staff average attendance, this is something that is one of our five board goals, looking at student and staff attendance, and we measure it and track it and talk about it every week, and we have seen a great increase. We're very proud of our staff. They are relentless, and they are there every day, and that's so important. So gone from ninety-six percent up to ninety-eight percent. They're actually exceeding the target we set for them at ninety-seven. That top picture, we have a longer school year. Our students go one hundred and eighty-five days, but our staff works two hundred and two days. And that is built in for our student-led conferences that happen every single quarter. We also do home visits and advisory meetings and a lot of professional development. So we start off our year with over a week of professional development and learning together, and one of our favorite activities is to get on buses and go to the city. And we meet with different agencies that we work with. We go to the neighborhoods that our kids live in, and we just learn about Peoria, and it's a really fun field trip for our staff. At the bottom there, you see our leadership team. We are structured in a shared leadership model, meaning that we have a senior leadership team, which consists of myself, our business manager, our director of curriculum and instruction, and our two principals. And then at each building, we have an instructional leadership team. And these teams, we meet for two hours a week, and then the instructional leadership teams at each building meet for an hour a week, just to make sure that we are working through things together and collaboratively. And thank you to everyone who's here who serves on our leadership teams. We couldn't do without you. Here's our staff ethnicity. This is something that we are always working on. We want to be a diverse staff that represents our student population, and we are constantly working on improving there. Our teacher satisfaction, a couple of things that I just want to point out, this again comes from the Five Essentials Survey. I was very impressed to see ninety percent of their teachers feel, report they feel trusted and respected by their principal. They have a great working relationship. That's key. And eighty-nine percent of teachers report professional development is linked to the school improvement plan. Professional development is really, really important for us in providing that time. As we all know, there is so much work to do in our schools and never enough time. And so two years ago, we restructured our day using our strategic planning process, and we put in a daily professional development time for our staff. So they start their day at seven-thirty together in team time or as a whole staff getting professional development, and then our students come in after they're finished, and that has just been a really great addition to our day. Here's a look at our staff. Fifty-two percent of our staff are in their first through third year of teaching. Twenty percent are in years four through nine, and twenty-eight percent have ten or more years. We have thirty percent of our staff with a master's or a PhD, and thirteen percent are working on their advanced degrees currently. Question six, are we building a sustainable financial model? The answer is yes. We have our enrollment dates four times a year, once a quarter, and last year, our target was five ninety, and that was achieved in the first two quarters. We had a clean audit, and our fundraising target was achieved. The last question is, are we engaging our community? And since day one, Quest has really been seen as a school of the community. It was a group of community members that came together and really formed this school and what they wanted to see and try. And it's really important to us that we give back to the community and be a strong partner within our community. So one of the things we did this year, we have a number of partnerships already, but one of the things we launched in our strategic plan was the Career Academies. And so this year, it's just freshmen and sophomores. And so Freshman Academy, there are a number of different activities and things that our freshmen go through in order to try to pick that career path and career interest, and then they move into one of the three academies. We run things like guest speakers, field trips, job channeling experiences. All of those things run through then the academy so that they get a little bit of a deep dive into their area of interest before they head out into college. We also are kind of dabbling with something else this year. This is another part of our strategic plan, and that was the implementation of the balanced calendar. And so far, that is going really well. We love it. But when we come back from our fall break and our spring break, we do what's called STEM camp, and that's where these Career Academies come into play. We had our first STEM camp in the fall, and teachers got so creative. Kids were going out everywhere, working with community partners. People were coming in, but it was all STEM-based, career-based, hands-on learning experiences, and it was awesome. So that's a way that we're partnering with our community, trying to give back. We do require forty hours of community service at our high school as a graduation requirement so that we can teach our students to give back to this great community. So this is just an example. We signed an MOU with Eureka College last year, and so we're working closely with them on a number of different opportunities that benefit both of our institutions. The Color Vibe, if any of you have had the opportunity to participate in that, that is a fun event held in July, and we are the charity partner. So there are cheerleaders out there working the Color Vibe. Can you go back one? Thank you. And this was an awesome first day of school. On August first, we opened on August first, several weeks before everyone else. Wasn't quite sure how that was going to go, but we had a hundred men come out and line our sidewalks and cheer our kids on it. It was just a fabulous day. So lots of great community support, and we just really appreciate that. I know you can't see this, but it is in your packet towards the end, and that is our Path to College and Careers. We call it the Road to Success. It's on page thirteen. And one of the things, this also came out of our strategic plan, but it was, you know, how do we get kids prepared for college and careers? What are the experiences that we're going to give them, starting in fifth grade all the way up? One of the things Quest has always done that I think is really neat is college tours. And so we get buses and we go visit colleges. And what we wanted to do through this was provide opportunities to layer in folks coming in and speaking about their careers and helping students get into career cruising at seventh grade, eighth grade, but also providing field trips, very specific field trips at every grade. And when we go out to these other cities, the intention is not just to go to the field trip, but to visit the college campus in that town as well. So by the time a student finishes with us, they have been on a lot of college campuses. And so that's part of this, and that launched this year as well. I don't know if you can make that bigger or not, but I can speak to it. We measure ourselves internally a number of different ways, and this year, what we're looking at is, and I know it's very hard to see, I apologize, looking at a minimum of a three percent gain in achievement with a stretch target of a five percent across the board with everything we measure. So when we're looking at fifth through seventh graders and WEA, as we know, a lot of our students are in those bottom categories, and what we want to see is movement out of those bottom two quartiles, movement up three to five percent. Once our students get into eighth grade, again, that three-year mark with us, we start to see more students popping into that at or above grade level category. We want to see that go up three to five percent. At eleventh grade, we're looking at the SAT as a measurement, that moving three to five percent, as well as the percent of students enrolled in dual-credit courses. Obviously, the end goal being a hundred percent college acceptance. Then we also look at supportive demographic measures such as teacher attendance and retention, student attendance and retention, and parental engagement and satisfaction. So those are things we report on to our board. We have five bold goals with our board, and those are the things that we are constantly measuring and tracking. Oh, there it is. When freshman on track, that's the other one. We want to see that grow as well, so. All right. Mr. Evans is going to lead us through the next part.
So here we have the Quest pledge, a pledge that students say twice every single day. It's been said since I've been in fifth grade. It's both said at the middle school in the morning and in the high school in the morning also. So first, I would like to ask if you're part of the Quest family to stand up and raise your right hand. As a valuable member of the Quest Charter Academy and community, today I commit myself to growth, achievement, and success. I am respectful, responsible, courageous, curious, honest, and hardworking. I pledge to the tools I have been given to realize my talent, fulfill my dreams, and attain my goals. I am on a quest to be the best.
Finally, we have just a quick, couple-minute video clip, and we simply ask these students, what do you love about Quest? And before we roll that for you, that's how we'll finish tonight, I asked Braxton if he would mind telling us what he loves most about Quest.
So like I said before, I've been in Quest since fifth grade. Since I've been at Quest, there's been so many opportunities and field trips I've been on. I went to college trips starting in freshman year, still going on them today. We go at least three times. You really get a personalized experience with our teachers, one-on-one teaching. There's great innovative things that they try to do and they carry out doing. I love that the Quest gives me the opportunity to go on a hundred percent of college.
And Braxton's going to be a principal someday, so. All right, we'll go ahead and play our video.
What I love about Quest is that, well, I've only had a junior school in my life and learned my own friends, my own crush friends that I grew up with. But then when I got the invitation from Quest in the mail, I decided to go there because I figured out that my education was more important than friendship because that depends on what you get to do when you grow up. And, well, Quest changed my life for the better good, and I get my own computer. So having my own computer is pretty nice. The teachers definitely teach me a lot more, and it's just a better school all around.
What I love about Quest is the teachers and how when they teach a lesson, they break it down so you can understand. And I also love the after-school activities you could do, such as soccer or track, cheerleading, team reach, and everything. They're fun, you should try them. And I also love how, just like the way the school runs, like the schedules and how they're putting it together, that's really nice. You have specials first, and then all your other classes last, and that's nice.
Hi, my name is Darius. I'm a sophomore at Quest, and what I like about Quest is the STEM camps and how they like do different things, stick you on field trips and stuff.
Hi, my name is LaShay.
Finally, we have just a quick, couple-minute video clip, and we simply asked these students, what do you love about Quest? And before we roll that for you, that's how we'll finish tonight, I asked Braxton if he would mind telling us what he loves most about Quest.
So like I said before, I've been in Quest since fifth grade. Since I've been at Quest, there's been so many opportunities and field trips I've been on. I went to college trips starting in freshman year, still going on them today. We go at least three times. You really get a personalized experience with our teachers, one-on-one teaching. There's great innovative things that they try to do and they carry out doing. I love that the Quest gives me the opportunity to go on 100% of college.
And Braxton's going to be a principal someday. So, all right, we'll go ahead and play our video.
What I love about Quest is that, well, I've only had a junior school in my life and learned my own friends, my own friends that I grew up with. But then when I got the invitation from Quest in the mail, I decided to go there because I figured out that my education was more important than friendship because that depends on what you get to do when you grow up. And, well, Quest changed my life for the better good, and I get my own computer. So having my own computer is pretty nice. The teachers definitely teach me a lot more, and actually, it's a better school all around.
What I love about Quest is the teachers and how when they teach a lesson, they break it down so you can understand. And I also love the after-school activities you could do, such as soccer or track, cheerleading, team reach, and everything. They're fun, you should try them. And I also love how, just like the way the school runs, like the schedules and how they're putting it together, that's really nice. You have specials first, and then all your other classes last, and that's nice.
Hi, my name is Darius. I'm a sophomore at Quest. And what I like about Quest is the STEM camps and how they like do different things, take your field trips and stuff.
Hi, my name is Lashay. I'm a sophomore at Quest, and I like that we have a balanced calendar, so we get breaks.
Hi, my name is Ahia. I'm a 12th grader at Quest. And what I love about Quest is that they're a college preparation school, so they make sure that all the students basically get prepared for college. They help us apply, they help us get scholarships, and they just make sure that every student is on the quest to be the best.
Hi, I'm Jaleen Fontler. I'm a freshman at Columbia College Chicago, and one of the things I loved about Quest was my senior capstone. I not only got to work on a project that I felt passionate about, but I also pushed myself into a leadership role. I was able to communicate with faculty and students in order to create a school event. And ever since, I feel a lot more comfortable taking on bigger initiative roles.
And with that, I want to say thank you. Thank you for having us tonight, and our doors are always open to you. We do tours all the time. And actually, we're having a special breakfast on February 21st and March 1st at 8:00 a.m., and we'll be doing a very brief presentation and then having student-led tours. So we would love to have you come anytime, February 21st, March 1st, 8:00 a.m. Please feel free to join us, or call for a private tour. We'd love to take you around. So I appreciate the opportunity to be able to share, and thank you to our Quest team for being here tonight. And at this time, Mr. Fleegy and I will answer any questions, or attempt to answer any questions you might have.
Board members, do you have any questions of the Quest presentation? Can you still hear us, Dr. Bob?
Yes, I hear, and yes, I do have a few questions.
Okay. Would you go ahead?
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Dr. Wood, can you hear me?
Yes, I sure can.
Okay. So I need to preface my comments by saying that I'm listening to you from, ah, okay. The reason I paused is because I'm watching and listening to you on TV and listening to you through my phone, and there's about a 25-second delay, which makes things almost impossible to follow.
I bet.
So I want to preface my comments by saying that there was that going on, plus it was very difficult to hear. The first question I have is, will we provide a link to this presentation earlier?
Mr. Copeland said he believes he sent it, but we can certainly resend it.
Okay, I must have missed that one. In terms of, and it was very difficult, I couldn't see the slides. So if your slide had this, it's because I simply couldn't see it. What was your 2016, 2017 graduation rate?
2017 was 95%.
I'm sorry, did you say 95%?
Yes.
And what is your teacher retention?
Last year was 76%.
Okay. Is this for the 2016, 2017 school year?
Yes.
And so those numbers are quite different from the Illinois At-a-Glance Report Card, the SUN website, which shows a 78% graduation rate and a 50% teacher turnover.
Right, and I can provide you a written explanation for that. So there's a couple different ways. When we report our graduation rates, how many seniors graduated with us? When the state reports it, it is the number of students who start with you as a freshman. And when they, if a student moves away, and say they move out of state, that counts against, against a school. So the state report card, the way that they're doing it is a little bit different. We are simply reporting what percent of our senior class graduated.
So this is somewhere around a 15% differential. Is what, so what you're saying will account for about that much?
Yes, because we're talking about two different things. We're talking about a senior class versus the number of students that start as freshmen and end up graduating with you your senior year.
Okay.
So they're looking, they also track, so say a student leaves Quest and comes to Peoria Public Schools, they're still tracking their graduation rate. If a student goes out of state, though, we lose track of them, and that number's lost.
Okay. And in terms of your teacher retention?
Right, so that is always two years prior, so that, that was 50%, the year prior, 46%, I believe.
Oh, so those, that 50% number is really for 20?
16.
14, 15?
2015, 16, correct.
2015, 16. Okay. I heard you talking a bit, and again, forgive me if I didn't have it clear, about students who are ready for college. What percentage of your students do you say, did you say were ready for college?
Well, all of them were accepted into college.
Okay. All of them were, yes. You do have a, again, according to the At-a-Glance Report Card, it looks like you beat the state in terms of enrollment at colleges and universities. However, that report card also says that while the new year for college, it says a third of them, only a third of them are ready.
Yeah, and that is, that is inaccurate on our report card. There are several pieces on our report card that were inaccurate, and we called the state to try to have them corrected, but they could not be. So we do have some pieces on our, on the school report card that are inaccurate, but the figures that we have provided to you are the correct figures.
Okay. I didn't see the asterisk on, on the, on the report card. Well, I think that's about it. I think I don't have any other questions. Thank you very much for your report.
Sure.
Thank you, Dr. Bob. Other questions by board members? Comments? Okay. All right. Dr. Karat, did you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. And thank you for being patient with us.
Oh, no problem.
Waiting. Any questions on any of Mr. Willis on the proposed expenditures? Seeing none? We'll give you a minute to exit. Reports of requests under the Freedom of Information Act and the status of such requests. Dr. Karat?
Thank you, President Ross. Since our board meeting on January 22nd, we received, we received two new requests, and of those, none were filled. There were also three pending requests noted on January 22nd. Two of those were denied, and one was filled. So we have received six requests for this calendar year for a cost of $370.
Thank you. Consent agenda, Mr. Adler.
The consent agenda consists of 13 items this evening. Item number one is gifts to the school district. This meeting, $160, year-to-date, $54,006.52. Item number two is the payment of bills. Item number three is a board travel request. Item number four is the payment for travel. Item number five is a human resources report. Item number six is the Board Policy 7:10, Equal Educational Opportunities. Item number seven is the Washington gifted Laredo Taft Field School Contract School for the eighth grade. Item number eight is field trip approval for Emmanuel Academy, Peoria High School, and Richwoods High School to Six Flags. Item number nine is the athletic training agreement. Item number 10 is the Franklin Additional Parking Project. Item 11 is the Manuel HVAC Project. Item 12 is consideration of a resolution to approve emergency life safety repairs at Peoria High. And lucky number 13 is an administrative contract approval for Dr. Wood. And that is the entirety of the consent agenda.
Thank you. Are there any of the 13 items any board member would like to have pulled for a separate vote?
Yes, please.
May I have a number, sir?
Number nine and number 13.
Okay, thank you. Number nine and number 13. May I have a motion and second on all items except number nine and number 13?
So moved.
Are there any discussion, are there any questions or any discussion on items other than number nine and 13? Okay, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Wilson?
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Dr. Davidson, obvialist?
Speak a little louder.
Mr. Jackson?
Doctor, doctor, he didn't hear you. Dr. Bob didn't hear you. I said, speak a little.
I didn't hear. Did you call my name?
Yes, uh-huh.
Aye.
Okay.
This is Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross. Four ayes and one abstain, motion here.
Thank you. Okay, item number nine. Dr. Bob, if you would make a motion?
I move that we pass item number nine.
Second.
Okay, now, do you have questions?
Only that I must abstain, I have a conflict of interest.
Okay, item number nine. All right, that's a vote. So any other questions on number nine from anyone, a discussion? Would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Dr. Davidson, obvialist?
Abstain.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Four ayes, one abstain, motion here.
And now, Dr. Bob, number 13?
Daphne, you're going to have to pretend you're mad at me. So you could yell.
Okay, number 13, this is Martha, number 13.
Okay, number 13, yes. If we could go to the contract on number 13, please? And take me a moment of scrolling down. Okay, administrators employment contact. If we could, please, go to section D, item number four, goals and indicators of student performance and academic improvement. If you will bear with me while I read this. In accordance with section 10-23.A of the school code, the parties agree that the following performance goals and indicators for the administrator have been established with respect to student performance and academic improvement. And the administrator shall assist the superintendent two, and this is where we start listing what those are, evaluate student performance, including, but not limited to, student performance at standardized tests, successful completion of curriculum, attendance and dropout rates, review the curriculum and instructional services, report the school board on findings as to student performance and recommendations, et cetera. And then, and my question might be largely one of semantics, but when you go to section 20, 10-23.8A, each performance-based contract shall include the goals and indicators of student performance and academic improvement determined and used by the local board. And while those words were used, uh-oh, in the contract, please don't look at me, I lost my contract. And as I said, it may be just a matter of interpretation, but I just wanted to be clear. Okay, so the sentence, starting anywhere, the administrator shall assist the superintendent two, and then it lists 1, 2, 3, 4, 1, 2, 3, and then A and B. There's nothing in that list that indicates academic improvement. Now, the word academic improvement appears in the sentence before, and I understand that, but when we enumerate what the goals and indicators are with items number one, number two, number three, the best I can see is successful completion of the curriculum, but academic improvement isn't even implied in that list, in that seriation. So then, am I to then assume that when it says academic improvement in the sentences prior to that, that you really mean academic improvement in items number one, two, three, et cetera?
Yes, Dr. Bob. In addition to that, there is, there is another instrument with all of those specifics that you're referencing, and I can share that with you for the other AIO. So this is just referring to the student performance and academic improvement, but there is a specific instrument that delineates and goes into further detail, and it's measurable and smart.
Great, thank you.
You're very welcome.
I have no comment.
Did we get a second? We got a second. Did you make a motion, Dr. Bob?
I guess I did not. I move that we approve item number?
13.
13.
Second. Okay, it's been moved in second by Mr. Wilson. Really should have had the comments afterward, but that's okay. Any other questions or comments on this item? Would you please call the roll?
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Dr. Davidson, obvialist?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion here.
Thank you. Okay, deliberation agenda.
Let me read. Expulsions, proposed action, that expulsion, explosions, expulsions. Listed on the report dated February 12, 2018, be approved as presented.
Second.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Dr. Davidson, obvialist?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion here.
Exposure with the, with the explosion to be held in advance, proposed action, that explosion with exposure, explosion held in advance, listed on the report dated February 12, 2018, be approved as presented.
Second.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Dr. Davidson, obvialist?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion here.
Revocation of explosion to be held in advance, proposed action, that the revocation of explosion to be held in advance, listed on report dated February 12, 2018, be approved as presented.
Second.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Dr. Davidson, obvialist?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion here.
Revocation of board probation, proposed action, that the revocation of board probation listed on the report dated February 12, 2018, be approved as presented.
Second.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Dr. Davidson, obvialist?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye. Aye.
Five ayes, motion here.
Thank you. Presentation and suggestions by board members. Ms. Jackson? Sorry. Bite in his chair.
I thought I saw Mr. Myers in there, but I want to bring this up. We'll cover it at the Buildings and Grounds meeting, but I...
Buildings Committee meeting.
Yeah.
Building Committee.
Yeah, that's, you knew what I was talking about.
Yeah, Building Committee.
On February 6th, we held a meeting regarding school name change, and we held it at Woodrow Wilson. And of course, when I'm talking, it has nothing to do with that. But as I came into Woodrow Wilson and started walking up the steps, I found that that school is not accessible. As a person that has a time walking up steps, there are no railings walking up those steps. And it's wholly a challenge because there's two steps and a long walkway, two steps and a very long walkway. The only door that is accessible is on the side that's not open, that's never opened. I would be real concerned that a parent in a wheelchair or students that might have some issues could not get into that school. It's interesting, I walked up those steps, but that was before I had new knees. So, it's a little different now. But I was real concerned with parents coming to see about their children. So, I would like for us, and I guess I'll be talk, I'm really kind of throwing this over at MIT, to really look at that school. There's no school that a parent or child should not be able to get in. So, I would like us to make a special effort to see what we can do to make that school accessible to our disabled parents and children and visitors in that school. Because the doors that are accessible are at the side off from the parking lot. And no one would see you if you stood at that door, and no one would hear you if you probably stood there and knocked. I think we ought to make every effort, and it's interesting, that prior to, two years ago, when I could walk up those steps, that it never dawned on me that that school is not accessible. And I think we need to post haste.
Yeah, thanks, Ms. Jackson.
Make some changes.
I think we can do something similar to what we did here when I got back, put some cameras, right? Because we were not accessible here either until last year, the main office. Maybe put some cameras on a buzzer on that side, the door that Ms. Jackson is referring to. That might be the most economical one.
Right. But eventually, we've got to do something better than that to get in the front door.
I was just going to say, while I applaud you for all of the capital improvements that we've made, there are a lot of things that need to be done yet. For instance, my grandson says that he, and the teacher that he helps get upstairs, got stuck on the elevator at Roosevelt for some time.
It's a freight elevator.
And that's the only way to get upstairs. They were stuck there for some time. He said he had claustrophobia and the teacher did, too.
How old is that building, Ms. Jackson?
We do have a number.
You went, you went to school there.
Yeah, and we'll take a look at that. We were lucky to have the county school facility sales tax give us $50 million to do some things with. 75% of that goes to HVAC. It leaves not very much, you know, forced to address other things. And it's just a drop in the bucket compared to what our needs are. But of course, we'll be having to take a look.
Yeah, I think that should be at the top of the list to do that. And what we might want to do is to check the other schools. I know I was in Keller the other day, and it's a good thing they had an elevator in there, on the new side, because at one point, there was no elevator to get to the second floor. But I think if we checked all the schools, but I think Woodrow is probably the worst school to get into.
Okay, thank you. Other presentations or suggestions by board members? What about board reports? Any board reports?
We will hold our second meeting regarding the name change at Valeska Hinton on Thursday, February 22nd, at 7:00.
Buildings Committee meeting.
Buildings Committee meeting.
You have that coming up also.
Pardon?
Well, that was the...
There's another one coming up.
Yes, February 22nd?
Right, that's the one you talked about.
At 7:00.
Okay. Other committees? All right.
I move that we adjourn. Second.
Mr. Wilson's waiting on the...